All right, just a reminder, the signature file is waiting for you to visit. And there's plenty of stuff to sign. And I saw Neil's signature, so he's been in. Myself today. And there's several things that we'll have to sign after our action tonight. So. Maybe tomorrow, if possible. And then I'll hand it off to Mary Ann Barnsley. For our Main Street Trash Discussion.
Thanks, Billy. So I get thanks, Jesse, for joining us. So um, I know we've all been sort of pulled into conversations. Around most of the trash pickup on, I guess, mostly Main Street. And Jess, I know you're shorthanded. So I'm not sure what sort of options. We have thoughts, ideas, ways we can help this out. Because it, you know, it really is sort of unsightly, especially as a tourist driving through.
Absolutely, it is. You know, I've I've asked several of the shops if they're if the if the receptacles ever get full. Give me a call.
Yeah, we give you a call. We've given you guys a call. We don't always catch it. I can tell you that much.
Well, and it's not me being short staffed is definitely. Hurt. To where I can't send my people out there all the time.
Right?
As far as solutions. I really don't have too many. The gentleman that stopped me on July 4th was talking about doing having volunteers go out there.
Right.
Which then goes into a liability issue for the town. Then. What else?
Increasing the number of trash power? I don't know if that would help at all.
I don't know, Mary. The only thing that I can think of is. Look into those compacting receptacles. That will work off of solar. That might be a way to do it, but we're looking at money. So I honestly, I really don't know, other than once I'm fully staffed again. I can send my people out there every day.
Is there a plan to be fully staffed? Or how do you see that?
I'm in the process of hiring people.
Okay.
So the gentleman that, you know, brought this to our attention. Also offered to maybe throw some money at a solution and suggested, well, maybe the purchase of. The metal trash containers that are similar to the ones that are on the common. I don't know if that would help, but I don't see why it would help necessarily. It just have.
It doesn't. It really doesn't. It's the it's the exact same size trash receptacle as the one on the common. They just look better.
Okay. And plus you'd miss the flower pots, too, I guess. Is there a flower pot on top of this or?
There is. Yeah, there is, Bill. I mean, honestly. Yeah, I'm a big person of carry in, carry out. But.
Yeah.
I don't really think that's an option.
Jesse, what's the timeline on you being staffed? You said you're hiring. Is that something that's that's weeks or months? Or how long out do you think that is?
I don't know that not everybody, not a lot of people like to have the idea of working at the town dump. So and it's hard to get. Good people to work at the dump.
So you're you're not getting enough applications? Is that the issue there?
I've I've only received one. And it's been put out for quite some time.
How do we put that out, Jesse?
We did. We usually local papers. I try not to go to the Record Enterprise. I go towards the pre-papers like the Penny Saver and. Yes, the no, something that people can just grab and it's free. We've. And then the in the past, we've also put it on. Like Solomon Press's website.
Record Enterprise newspaper. We put it on NHMA's website. They have a place for advertising for municipalities. So we've put it on that as well.
It looks like we don't have it on our own website at the moment.
That's correct.
Jesse, can you email that over to the Town Hall, either Kathy or myself, and we'll get that back up on the website? And send, I think we have the ads again out to the newspapers and see what we can do.
With indeed.com. With indeed.com. I've had really good luck with that. We just put our open dispatch position out there. I got 43 applicants.
Wow.
Yeah, it's also the police department.
Yeah.
Trust me, nobody wants to be a cop or worker of police department right now.
I've used indeed.com and we've had success.
And it's free unless unless you want to like pay for it. You can pay for part of it, but the section I use is free. And like I said, I got 43 applicants.
Send them to Jesse.
I can try.
Does Parks and Rec also help trash out too, or?
Not really. I asked if they could help. I gave them a box of trash bags. I don't know if they have.
Yeah. Should we approach them or or just?
I already have.
Okay.
We we pick it up if it's tipped over. Needing it up was.
No, I mean.
So, Mary Ann, we know that there's a concern of the board. And we're going to work with Jesse to see what we can do to get that cleaned up. So that it's not unsightly anymore when it comes into town. We'll work with the several departments that we have. So if you happen to see it full, please either call Jesse directly, the Recycling Center, or Kathy, myself, here at the Town Hall.
So a lot of times we see it on the weekends. You know, Saturdays and Sundays in particular.
Okay.
Well, it gets picked up on Sundays. So we only have two scheduled days. When I come to work, when I go to work, I look at the trash receptacles most of the time as I'm going to work. And you know, I'll send a message out to. My cemetery attendant to go out there and to pick it up. I mean, our second schedule scheduled days are only Wednesdays and Sundays. And we'll we'll come pick up after maybe. It's just it's just really hard right now. Because every other day they're either off or they're staffing the recycling center.
Hey, Kathy, do you and Jesse, do you want to talk about Matt at this point?
That's a non-public.
Is it non-public or?
Yeah, it's personnel.
Usually it's non-public if it's a personnel action, though, but.
It's HIPAA related.
All right.
Yeah.
Well. Okay, we'll hold it for a future date then, or you want to? Discuss it now, even going in and on public at this point?
Yeah, we don't bill. We don't have a finalized. Thing thing from Matt yet. So.
All right.
Till we have something in writing.
Yep. Okey doke. That's good.
I'm just trying to see if, but if Jesse, if you guys pick it up Wednesdays and Sundays. You know, maybe, I don't know, Friday going into the weekend, maybe somebody can help.
It's usually my cemetery personnel.
So maybe Friday we can do you have, can you get them to come down and take care of it on Friday? Yeah. That would help going into the weekend and then Sunday, you know.
Right.
Hopefully it won't fill up too much before Sunday, but.
Well, it does.
Yeah, fills up fast.
If it gets taken care of Friday, though, that should give us a little bit of leeway.
That's the thing. And if it gets taken care of Friday morning by the by the time Saturday evening rolls around, it's already full.
Yeah, a lot of times I'll come in Saturday or when I come in Saturday morning, you can see it. You know, lots of pizza boxes and good for me, lots of ice cream stuff. Depending on what's going on on the on the common as well.
True.
Jesse, can you send me some stuff about that? Did you say solar compacting trash?
Yeah. You see a lot in the cities.
In the in the cities. If you could send me that, maybe that can be part of this CBD grant. Sort of things that they're looking for to fund. I don't know how much it is, but. Sounds kind of like something that they're maybe looking to fund that sort of thing.
I'll look into it.
I don't know what. If you could just, what's it called? That is that what it's called? Just?
This is a compact receptacle. It's what it is.
Oh, it's compacting?
Yeah. Yeah, it's solar. So there's a solar array on it. It has a battery in it. So that way we don't have to use, you know, we don't have to hardline it to. To electricity.
Okay. Great.
Do I get a report from Jules as far as the status of our grant applications at this point? But are we pretty much resolved with that at this point?
I think at this point, we'll probably just have to revisit it as we move along some more.
Jules, you want to?
All right, thank you.
Is the board done with me?
For now.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
Right, we'll start with the good news. Looks like our House bill. With about Highland Street is passed, so. Looks like we're formally in, although I'm still waiting for the official. You know, printout and to be listed on the website for the 10 year plan, but. Looks like that all passed. So that was on June 30th.
Is it Highland Street?
The Highland Street. For the 10 year plan. Yeah. So the next step with with that would be to. Start thinking about rights of way and. Updates on engineering. And just to get the financial particulars. So I'm watching that. Does anybody have any? Comments or questions about that?
So that's for this 10 year plan. The current one.
Just to be clear, yeah.
Do we actually know where we fall in the 10 year? Are we like year number two or year number nine?
23, isn't it true?
Oh, five. I thought it was.
22.
22.
22 is the engineering. And then 25 is the start of the project itself.
Yeah, I think it's rights of way, engineering, rights of way and construction, right, Joe?
Yeah, 22, I'm not sure about the 25 end of it though.
Twenty, yeah.
21, 22 is the engineering part of it.
So in my lifetime.
Yeah, in your lifetime, yeah. Should be able to see that. Anything else on that? Okay, so our big equipment grant, which is spoke with Steve about today. Unofficially, we are approved. Miss DeSantis Galley said that we're going to get it, the 250,000. And she would really like to bundle that with our PPG grant signing. So we have to sign all these papers. She wants to come all at once and sign everything all at once. So I'm kind of wondering if we can get that also going. Maybe we can get this both of them signed by the end of July. It'd be nice. So I'm kind of shooting for that. So any questions on that?
What's covered in that grant, Jules?
So it's the way it was explained to me is, you know, that's the grant that we applied for for all the big equipment, like Steve's. Big radio dispatch. A loader and some stuff from the Recycling Center, that glass crusher. Bob Skid steer. In an ambulance. We applied for all those things, but we the only award 250 was the maximum. So. Once we spend down. You know, the 900,000. And then we we spend this last remaining 250,000 from that grant package, they will reimburse us. So it's they're not particular about what they fund from that package that we submitted. As long as it's on listed on there. That's how it was explained to me, but. Yeah.
We included a couple of big equipment items from highway as well. Yeah.
The fire department had something too, right?
And we gave them, we gave them a whole load of stuff. You know, so.
Were those things in the bond? So we, okay, so we have all this extra money.
We don't. We don't have all this extra money, but we do have money to cover like, you know, so that we can get the equipment and then get reimbursed. So. But it will like juice Jules said, it will only be 250,000. Yeah, 250,000 is better than 0,000. So.
Absolutely. That's great.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. And like I was telling Steve, the only sticky point is that the invoices, you know, we can't have, I find this unlikely that it would happen, but. You know, we have to save back to, we can start spending now because we have so much to buy. But. We need that after we get our approval and sign the papers, that's when the invoices can be dated after that date. It only has to equal 250,000. So like the ambulance. That's not even being built right now, I don't think. Is it? I don't know. It is being built. Okay. So if we could just, I.
It takes months.
It takes months. Quite a while. So we should be fine and dandy. And they also said that for emergency equipment. There is more leeway with that technicality of. They're supposed to be funding something that we didn't already sign up for, so to speak. So that's that was the only sticking point.
Jules, and I found out today from the company. That even if they order the equipment after tonight, it's probably a month and a half to two months before they get the equipment in. So we probably won't be seeing the first bill for about two months.
Yeah, that works in our favor.
Yeah, so that that's fine. We can relax about that. And for Smith Bridge. You know, Bill was there at the meeting where we are want some intersection improvements for the next 10 year plan. In 10 years, but in the meantime, DOT had agreed to restripe that intersection to make it less hazardous. Because of the shared. Turning lane. So but then when they went out there, this is a long story. They discovered that because of the misaligned intersection at the the first driveway there for the co-op. The electric co-op is misaligned, it's not lined up with Smith's Bridge. They said we can't restripe it now. They need to realign that intersection. Get to the end of that story. After a lot of conversations with the co-op, it looks like. I just talked to DOT today and they said that they will not restripe it. Until the co-op agrees not to allow anything to turn into that driveway. Because the co-op is not going to. Redo their driveway and repave it to a line because they're not sure if they're going to even stay there. I talked to Craig Snow, who's the Vice President. Yeah, he's a buildings facilities guy. So he's happy to work with us, but it's a matter of those trucks that need that. I guess they need that first driveway to turn into this. So we're trying, but the bottom line is we're trying to work out some kind of. Scenario where they don't have to rebuild their driveway and we can get that restriped so it's safer. In the meantime, before they possibly do some improvements 10 years from now. Does that make any sense?
So that won't be in my lifetime.
Unless they, you know, they were pretty rattled by that whole, I guess, the DOT engineer, Bill Lambert, went down there and he. Had a near collision sort of situation where he was trying to turn into that driveway. Somebody was trying to turn onto Smith Bridge and then there was a car trying to pass him and. And he was pretty rattled by all that, it sounded like. And he was definitely wanting some action on that. So he said.
Welcome to our world.
Yeah, so you know, that was a coincidence that may work in our favor, but. So he's going to craft a letter for us saying that, you know, this is what we need and to keep just keep at it and. You know, maybe we'll come up with something that's safer in the meantime. But it looks like at least they're paying attention to that intersection more.
Yeah.
Okay, the grant with, well, Kathy can kind of fill us in on this. The EDA grant.
We're. Wright Pierce with Plymouth Village Water and Sewer. Sent a contract over for us for review to sign off on so that they would. Be doing our engineering work and I thought they were applying for the grant itself. But I sent it to the attorney for review and his input and his suggestion is. That we still have our own engineer oversee the project. Just to make sure that the town of Plymouth is. Being done right, you know, by Wright Pierce. So right now we're in the middle of reviewing. Their recommendations for the contract itself. And getting in our own engineer on board to oversee the project. So I need to get like a cost estimate from him and, you know, a plan from him. So it's still kind of in the works. But he's supposed to be writing the grant as well. If we get our own engineer, he's supposed to be working on the grant as well. To make sure that Plymouth's protected, the town is protected.
So with the additional engineering costs, that's going to jack up our obligation pretty much, or? Did we anticipate putting our engineer as a?
We thought that our engineer would oversee the project. So, you know, we'd be paying him to to watch over it. So it's just getting. You know, looking at. What his proposal would be to us for the price.
All right.
Bill, did you hear anything more about the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Plan there with Jeff Hayes? We kind of started it and then I I haven't heard much about it since then. Do you know?
No. No. You know, what he no, I haven't haven't heard anything since then. Have you?
No, no.
Follow up.
Yeah. And so I did speak with Don Jotten and he said that he is more than willing to draft an MOU. Between the town and the water and sewer regarding all this quick claims and. Expectations. So.
Great.
That was probably over a week and a half ago. So we should probably check back.
Follow up.
Yeah, follow up with that pretty soon this week. Yeah, was that?
That was easy.
Yeah, well, we'll see, yeah. And the last one is for now is the airport hangar and helipad. And or helipad, which Rita is. Castanaway is really working well with us for that. As you probably know, Colin wants, we should have had Colin here, but he wants a helipad. And a hangar and we're Northern Borders. Has there's a possibility of a grant there for the hangar, but it's only 50%. So the thought is try to get. Funding from somewhere else, but. So there's some legal things that we need to file for to get this going. So that's that's where we're at with that.
Wasn't Argent Tech gonna pay for some of this? Because the improvements were specific to their needs, right? The helipad and.
Were they? Oh, I don't know. What they were supposed to pay for part of the helipad?
I kind of think so because that was their, their, you know, requirement. Maybe they assumed that we would pay for it, but I thought they, you know, they were going to be like. You know, obligated to do some of this.
Oh, I will check on that.
I know the Collins also romancing another pilot. Away from Laconia to establish a hangar here. He's been working on that guy. So there's room for it. It's just, you know, it'd be nice to see them all kind of come together at once.
But they they were going to do a hangar for training and I guess to house their flightless or, you know, pilotless. Arrow, whatever. And. Also to improve the septic system and. Do a classroom. And so I think they were going to take the hit on that.
Oh, yeah, we need to.
That was the original conversation we had with them.
Okay, so that we need to revisit that. But also, you know, Anne just passed me off some CBD grant. Looks like they expanded some of the funding opportunities for that. And so I'm going to. I've got a meeting with somebody from that outfit tomorrow online and talk about some funding possibilities there. See how that works. And that is also they fund a lot of housing. So that will be on our docket for for Wednesday. Is it this Wednesday, Kathy, for the economic development? Or is it next Wednesday?
Economic Development's Wednesday night.
This Wednesday, okay. So just as an update, since we're here, Nick is going to be zooming in. Nick Coates from Bristol and, you know, they had that housing project there. And he said basically the developer did a lot, you know, they did that, got the grant, CBD grant. And put in that housing unit. So he's going to kind of touch upon some of that stuff. To do with how that. Came about. That's it. Anything, any questions?
Thanks, Jules.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do you want to kick off discussion on Parker Street? And. It's intersection with Route 3.
Okay. We can. I mean, I can just start. I. I've been here long enough to know that it's definitely an issue, safety issue, and we've had the state. And I don't know what it's about involved, but they. They're very aware of what's going on.
Joe, where's Parker Street?
If you go three south and there is kind of like almost a Y, it's coming on to Route 3.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, yep.
That's back over to Thurlow.
Yep, yep.
There's been several incidents lately, most mostly today.
Parker Street's the oldest street in Plymouth. Laid out by the King surveyors. It was supposed to be Main Street Plymouth. Leads up to the Range Road up Texas Hill. And originally went behind Roger Ellsworth's house. You know, went right across Thurlow and right up behind Roger Ellsworth's house. There's still evidence of the original road.
So Neil, just since you said that, any, is there any historic value on?
It never worked out.
So no, then.
Never worked out for the town.
All right. So and that's well, the chief and Joe are here to, you know, kind of discuss. Maybe some solutions or possibly discuss what's going on there that, you know, could be corrected or. What's going on there that, you know, could be corrected or, um, and I guess there was a mirror that was put up initially.
Yes, sir. A few, a few years back, I was approached to put a mirror up, so I bought one, the biggest spot that I could get. And so I, we were getting ready to put it up and I don't do any of that stuff without, you know, contacting.
DOT.
The state and I was unsuccessful at that time to try to find anybody that would work with me. So I, I just tabled it and then just recently I, I was getting more. More input to put a mirror back up. So I tried again and this time after four different phone conversations. I wrote the guy's name down and then he gave me permission to put it up. So we put it up and a day later we had an accident there. So, uh, it's not foolproof.
Parker Street gets a lot of heavy traffic and every time I go in or out of Parker Street, I just say a prayer. That's how I feel about it.
It's like Smith Ridge Road.
Yeah.
Yep, right.
It's bad.
It is bad. I mean, we have, I ran some stats. We've only had four accidents in the, uh, in the past 15 years there, but that's, that's not the point. The point is it's bad. Very bad. The intersection like Bill said is more like a Y and if you're coming down Parker Street onto, uh, Route 3 and you want to make a left-hand turn, you are not facing the right direction.
Is that the nature of those wrecks Steve? Was left turners out of there?
Um, I don't know without checking. I didn't get specifics. I just ran some general stats and gave them to Kathy, but, uh, I could, I could check that out. Like I said, it was only four of them in 15 years, but again, that's not the point. Safety is more of the point. You know, I mean, we can't wait for somebody to get seriously injured there before we take some action.
If somebody's pulling out to go south on Route 3, they have very poor visibility and people coming up the hill on Route 3 are, are getting on the throttle.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You got that going plus just south of there is a corner, so you can't see until you're actually on top of the intersection.
So we've had two accidents there in the past, like a month and a half or thereabouts. So we, 50% of the, um, accidents occurred most recently. I guess.
Well, there's been a major change in driver responsibility. A lot of people seem to think that the police can't stop them anymore. And, and you know, they're, they're driving at extremely high rates of speed and, uh. You know, it's a bad situation.
Um, well regardless, what, so what might be it? What's that?
Looks like we're on low battery. We're just trying to. Plug it in, plug it in. Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Well, you know, I, I, in fact, I've heard of solutions like, just like, um, you know, taking it up and, and calling it quits on the, on the terminus of Parker Street. Or someone suggested like making it one way, but I don't know what one way, um, would work, you know, um. But just like exiting that street is kind of, um, you know, dangerous and.
Can, can I say something?
Yeah, please.
I, I think we should start by asking the state to put better signage up. They, they should have signage on Route 3 going south that there's a blind intersection. And, you know, whatever else you think is appropriate. Signage would make a difference, you know, and it doesn't cost much and, and you can do it right now.
I can, I can do that. I can talk with the state and get a representative up here. And, and ask them if they could work with us to put some different signage. You know, a better awareness of that intersection. I can set that up if you'd like.
I haven't been over there recently, but how's the brush situation on that intersection? Is it, is it currently cut back pretty low or is it?
But it is not cut back. It's, it's growing, but that's normal. I mean, this time of year, the brush is cutting. And, and this, the state, just like we do, we have certain times that we do that. So like if you were to cut it now, you'd have to cut it again. So they, they try to find a happy medium in the best time to cut it. So, so if there was a concern there that we can't see. If someone was to approach me with that, then I'd call the state and have them come up and they would have to trim that. So it's just a process. If, if, if you can't see because of the brush. Just let me know and I'll contact the state.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't, I haven't been over there, so I don't know if that's.
It's.
The result of the recent accidents is, is low visibility and, and that would contribute, but.
I, I wasn't there for that, so I couldn't say, but.
Yeah, back in oh nine, there were some email conversations going on with Steve Temporino, Casino Flogston. And some of the residents, uh, the Whitmans in that who live there. Uh, and that conversation seemed to be around making the small section one way off of Route 3 up to Parker Street. And then posting it, um, you know, do not enter. Whether that's an answer or not, I don't know, but that's what they talked about back then.
That wouldn't be hard to do.
You know, and then in, in part of that discussion in the email, then, you know, uh, the resident who lives there, the annoyance would be now we're driving by and see somebody wants to sneak up there to go to their house. Cause it's quicker than taking the two minute trip around and now we're gonna take enforcement on them because it's, it's a do not enter in one way, you know? So I think that was part of the, part of the discussion then. Is that the only downside to putting a one-way there? That one person? I don't think it's one person. I think there were several people. Um, I think it's just recently, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bill. Was it you that got an email from the Whitmans or something like that? Just, uh.
Yes.
That wasn't recently, but. Wrong one. No, it was recently. Yeah. So, uh. You know, and they were one of the ones, they were one of the families that actually I believe one of their children had an accident at that intersection.
Yeah, um, yeah, uh, I was having correspondence with, um, Charlene Whitman and, um. And, um, I guess her concern too is, um, you know, the other residents there. Uh, you can't really step on their traffic patterns, I guess, or, you know, she had concerns about that, um, you know.
Well, the, the bottom line though, it's not, I mean, is it an inconvenience? Yes. Is it a major inconvenience? No, you have to drive a minute and a half around. You know what I mean? To, to the next intersection and, and come from the other direction. You know, um.
Would it be possible to just turn the end part of that road one way? So.
That's, yeah, that's what they were referring to, just that, that little small end.
Yeah, just from where that last house is down to Route 3.
Yep.
Would that be one way exiting or, or entering there Steve off of Route 3 to Parker?
From the email that I was, and Charlene's here now because she, maybe she'll remember the conversation, but the old email conversation, um, from Steve Temporino. I think it was preventing people from coming from Route 3 up Parker Street. Charlene, is that how you remember it? That little small end. Yeah, just from where that last house is down to Route 3. Yep.
Would that be one way exiting or, or entering? So Charlene, is that your, um? Is the TV on or something or?
Somebody might have a phone on in this at the same time.
Yeah.
Sorry, I am getting major feedback. It's really hard to hear everything.
Is, is your phone or your TV on or something or, or John?
My phone is not on. I don't have anything on.
Charlie, is that your, um? Is the TV on or something or? That's, you know, the, the dual sound is like PPTV. I think we may, we may have already dealt with it. Yeah. Someone's watching or listening to PPTV while they're on the meeting.
Can you ask Andrew? That's us. With Andrew.
I think it just, I think it just, uh, cleared up. Yep. Okay, sorry, Charlene, um.
What's up, Brian?
Do you want to? Do you want to put your mic back on and, and, um? Respond to? Try that again. I think it just.
It might just, it might be me. Maybe I have a bad.
It is, it is you.
Is that better? Is that better?
No, it's still, um, on the background.
Is it better now? It's better. Hold on. Hold on one second. I'm just gonna move. I might have a bad signal. Is that better? Is that better?
No, it's still, um.
Is it better now?
So Charlene, it's still, um, it's still an issue.
Charlene, can you look to see maybe if you have another tab such as YouTube open that potentially we're just copying?
Of course, I don't hear it now.
Well, she's on mute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I think I figured it out. It's because I was still watch, I still had YouTube open for the meeting.
There it is. That was it.
Sorry.
Well, that's all the time we have. Well, thank you.
Okay, sorry. So what was the last question or?
Was it the one, was it the one-way thing or what or?
My recollection, because that seems so long ago to me, was we all had little kids on the street and it was more, it was less about the intersection back then. And more about people driving really fast on Parker Street. They were coming in off of Route 3 at high speed and just like flying through, using it as a cut through, which still happens. But at the time, I think that was our major concern because we all had little kids playing around and people were driving really fast on our street. Um, so I think we were talking about. One way going out to Parker, believe it or not, but now I feel like the opposite. Um, coming into Parker. I actually think it should just be dead-ended, to be honest with you. Um, I think it's safe, it's dangerous coming into it and it's dangerous going out. Um, I don't think there's a lot of people who turn left at the end of Parker Street. Um, some people do, and I know that the most recent accident was a left-hand turn. Um, but my issue, I've never tried to turn left there. If I have to go that way, I go through town, um, by Warren Street, but. Turning right is very dangerous. My son's accident was turning right. Um, it's a blind corner. And I think even if you trimmed the bush, the brush back, it's a corner. It's a blind corner. I think some signage would help, um, maybe a blinking yellow light. I don't know, something to slow people down. The speed limit there is 30 and people do not go 30 coming around that corner. Um, I don't know the details of my son's accident per se, how fast the other people were going. I know that he insisted that he looked and checked because someone, he did let one car go before he went. Um, and then the car coming around the corner saw him, tried to avoid him. And he hit them anyway because they pulled, they swerved around him, so he hit their side. Um. So it's, I think, going, I think it's, it's definitely more dangerous leaving Parker and going onto Route 3. Than it is coming off of Parker and, I mean, off of Route 3 and turning on to Parker, because you can stop on Route 3, you can see that corner. You can turn onto Parker Street, um, but there is a speed issue. People coming off of Route 3 onto Parker Street go fast. Um, so I think the best solution, to be honest, and I know many neighbors, some may be watching and I've spoken to many neighbors. And most of them that I've spoken to are happy to see it just dead-ended. Um, and a Neil's, Neil's comment about saying a prayer at the end of every time you're there, that's exactly how I feel. It's like, look, look again, look four times and then take a deep breath and hope no one's flying around that corner. Um, and now we just, we've stopped using it, to be honest with you. And I think after these, those two accidents were in the last two weeks. The accident yesterday was exactly two weeks from my son's accident.
Wow.
Um, and I think a lot of people now are just like, I'm not even going in that way anymore. But not everyone's local. Not everyone knows that.
Totally. As far as when you come down Parker Street to Route 3. What about putting like a sign that says just right-hand turn only or, or, uh, no left-hand turn? So, you know, putting a sign that says can't make a left-hand turn. You only go right.
Yeah, I definitely think making a left-hand turn is a bad idea here, but I, they're both.
I don't, I don't know what hoops we have to go through to do that, but.
Right.
But if we do that, at least we, we do away with part of the problem.
Well, I don't think we need approval from anybody to do anything because Parker Street is ours, so we can do what we want with that street. That's totally up to the board. They can make that decision. Once we get on to Route 3, obviously the state's gonna be involved. But anything we actually put on Parker Street, the board can just, uh, the board can just approve.
I mean, I, I agree that no left-hand turn sign is a good idea, but I also feel like taking a right-hand turn is. Equally as dangerous.
If we were to decide to do something there, would we have to either have a hearing or talk to the people on that street? What would be the, be the best way for us to? Make a change there without upsetting that segment of the community?
I think definitely a public hearing is.
Yeah.
The question is, do we need require two actually, I think. But, uh, that way the, the residents of the street and the rest of the town can weigh in on, on what they want.
I guess I want to hear more from Joe as, as well, who was our, you know, our road, well, not road agent in name only, but, um. You know, do you have any, um, opinion whether or not it gets closed or one-way going into Parker Street or? Uh, signage saying right-hand turn only?
So, so in my opinion, if you're coming down Parker Street on a Route 3, i- if you take that left-hand turn out of the equation. That, I think that's where a lot of your accidents happen. So if you take that out of the equation, even if you have to make that right-hand turn, that intersection is rather wide. So, you know, you can pull up and you still have to do your, make your prayer thing, whatever you gotta do, but, but you have a better chance at getting out of there. Then, you know, so if you take the left-hand turn out of it and, and I did notice, you know, they mentioned a, a blinking light. I'm not sure where you would put that, but I think you'd have to involve the state. But when I talked to him about putting some signs up, I could entertain and ask that question also.
They could reduce the speed limit at the bottom of the hill on Route 3.
I was just gonna suggest that. I think if you move, if you move the reduced speed limit back further. Um, I don't know, towards like Crystal Springs or something like that, so it's reduced a lot further. Um, before you even get to the intersection, uh, that, that may help. I mean, it, it's not gonna, um, it's not a guarantee. Um, you know, and I, I know everybody doesn't want to hear this because it's the most expensive thing, but I, I think either closing it off or making it one way is gonna be the safest thing.
Yeah.
Charlene?
Um. The speed factor is actually coming from the other direction from town.
Cause they're speeding up.
They're fly, yes, they're coming out of town and they're accelerating, coming around that corner. And that is why making that right turn is so dangerous. The speed limit's 30 and people are not going 30 when they come around that corner. Um, so when I think of signage, I'm thinking more that side, the people coming from South Main Street. Need to be warned to slow down, um, caution, bad, dangerous intersection, something like that. Because that, they're just coming out of town and gunning it because they know they're heading on to Route 3. And I'm not sure that there's even a speed limit sign there.
There's one going into town. I'm not sure about coming out, but.
Right.
I, I, I don't recall, but. You know, one there because they put the speed board up and they get me almost every time.
I think we're all guilty of it and it's not till things like this happen that you realize how slow 30 miles an hour really is. And that's what you should be doing coming around that corner. And that's what you should be doing coming around that corner.
So what if they made that a dead-end road, Joe? What would that do to the highway department?
Well. I'm not saying it's not possible. But you, you have to create a, some kind of a turnaround cul-de-sac. So for fire purposes, in a place to dump off. So you're, you're already down to the beginning of the guide rails when, at that point, because, because of the last house there. It, I'm not saying it's not doable. It has to be. If it's, if people want to vote it in, then I would, I would entertain having it looked at, whether we try to put a plan together ourselves, but you definitely would have to have some easements.
Okay, I wasn't even thinking about that. So that, that probably would be an issue.
Yeah, there would, there would have to be some kind of cul-de-sac at the end for emergency vehicles to be able to turn around.
And, and it can be done, but you know, you're going to have to work with the homeowners and create an easement and, and build it. If there's that strong of, of an opinion and you want it done, it, it can be done. If you, if the homeowners give up or they want to share that, you know, let that happen, cul-de-sac, we can make it happen.
Is it worth investigating that, Joe? Kind of getting prices and the effort involved? Just so we know what we're talking about?
It is. It's just another piece of engineering that you pay for. Just a matter of coming up with the funding to, to, to move forward, to figure it out. Which we can do. I, I can certainly look into it and talk with, with our, my engineer. And, you know, get his, in his opinion, see if it's worth our while. He'll certainly tell me one way or the other, whether it's worthwhile.
I don't know if this helps or hurts, but it looks like there's a public service company easement that runs right through there too. I don't know if that would help to establish the spot for a turnaround or not.
Yeah, there's like a power, I think there's a power line that comes into play there.
It certainly wouldn't interfere with it because that's mostly for an aerial easement, Zach.
Oh, okay.
You know, and, and the, for the things underneath it, it's just about heights of trees and that sort of thing. But certainly it could accommodate a cul-de-sac. And it might be easier to obtain the easement from them than, you know, the homeowner. But, you know, there's only two of them that would be involved there. And it's, you know, if it was sited away from their driveways, they'd probably welcome it. I mean, a great place for, I grew up on a cul-de-sac and that's where we rode our bikes and skateboarded.
True. So it's getting kind of latish in this discussion. So as far as, you know, we've got like an idea of short-term, or not short-term, but things that we can do kind of like very quickly, which is signage. But I guess if we wanted to, you know, investigate like a one-way or a cul-de-sac. Actually, Joe, if you could check with the engineer, maybe that would be a good.
Yeah. I mean, even if we do like a, a one-way or, you know, a temporary until we, until we get to that point with a cul-de-sac, we can still move forward. You know, we could do both. We could create a one-way and then, and then when that comes into play, we could just shut it down.
And signage, I mean, you have to work with DOT on that. But, you know, if you think of that, like placing a reduced speed even out to some of the springs there and.
One more thing I wanted to share, so by doing all of this, we're going to bring a lot more people down Warren Street. And that, that, where that dumps onto Route 3, that's awful too.
Yeah, that's awful too. At least we're looking at a solution though.
I didn't want to bring that up, but. I've said enough tonight.
In my process of working on South Main Street, I'm going to approach the engineers because we're going to be ripping up the end of Warren Street to do drainage and sewer and water. And I'm, I'm going to see if we can't, it would require an easement, but maybe try to straighten that intersection out, just so it's more straight with Route 3.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be, so I'll work on that also.
Okay. Any other comments regarding this issue? Here, Ryan's checked out, so I guess we're all set there.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Yeah, thank you, Charlene.
Thank you.
Thanks. And actually, we're kind of early to start the meeting, so. What else?
Get air, Bill. Tell a joke.
No.
Well. Are we still in session?
Yeah, we're, we're in session.
Do you think we should have public hearings on this?
Ultimately, yeah.
Like when?
Um, well.
I got some homework to do and then maybe we can, after I share it with Kathy, if there weren't getting a public session, then we'll do it.
Yeah. Sounds prudent.